Dipper jelly sandwich.
We're recording.
That was my dinner.
Okay.
It's delicious. It's a classic.
So good. And a granola bar on top of that.
Yes, that's deluxe.
Yes, now it's working. Right, that's what's happening now.
Gareth in the vegetable garden right now. That's so funny. I like that picture.
And attendees are starting to, are starting to show in the sidebar. Thank you. Okay, okay. All right, I'm sorry. Okay, great. Yes, there is. No, it says promote to panelists.
Is that it? Wow. I can't hear anybody.
Hello?
I can hear you, Donna.
No one else is talking.
I was muted. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Hello? Hey, Jim.
How are you?
Good. We don't see you yet.
Working on it. Wayne can't join because his mother-in-law went into the hospital. So Robert, Bob Peak from JMC is going to join.
Great. That was Bob who, Glenn?
Peak, P-E-A-K-E. He's with JMC, the engineering firm.
Okay. He's an engineer there.
Yeah, he's more of a, you know, he's the guy who wrote the bulk of the document.
Okay, good.
Terrific guy. Is Valerie joining, Kathy?
Yeah. Yes, she is.
It'll be interesting to see how many members of the public will be on the,
Yeah.
on it. I don't think, since this is like a seminar view, I'm not sure we'll get to see the numbers.
Oh, really?
Margaret.
Margaret, yeah, Margaret, you'll see, right? How many do you see now? Oh, can't hear you.
You're on mute.
Hey, Valerie.
You can unmute. Margaret.
Margaret.
We can't hear you.
He's working on it.
Okay, sorry.
There we go, great.
Just two people from the public are, are signed in so far.
Okay, great. And they sign in with their names, so we'll have a record?
Yes.
Okay. See, I already, I got one letter from a neighbor, but it was addressed generally, went to the municipal building, but I got that, so I will scan that and send it along, so it's a part of the record.
Okay.
Valerie, before you join, Glenn mentioned that Bob Peak from JMC is present too.
Supposed to be joining, I don't know why he's not on yet. I don't know why he's not on.
Hi, Carolyn. I didn't.
Hi, everybody.
Hi. Hi, Donna.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
I'm trying to see where Bob Peak, who wrote the document, is. He's supposed to be joining. Gareth, maybe I can, I'm going to be giving a little PowerPoint, five-minute PowerPoint. Maybe I should just start with that now?
Let me, let me start. I'll just sort of introduce
Yeah.
the meeting, tell, tell, you know, help the public understand what we're going to be doing tonight. And, and then I'll, I'll introduce you and you can get, give us PowerPoint introduction.
Okay.
Let's wait another minute or so for, for Dan.
I see Bob, I see Bob Peak as an attendee.
Oh, okay, great.
Well, he, he needs to be a panelist.
Can we put Bob Peak as a panelist?
Can Bob, you, you can do that, Margaret?
Yes.
Okay. There it is.
Hello, Bob Peak.
Hello.
Okay. So it's 7:33. I think we probably ought to get started. So, good evening and welcome to the November 3rd. Oh, I'm getting a terrible echo. Can anyone who's not speaking put themselves on mute? That's a good general rule, anyway. That sounds better already. So, good evening, welcome to the November 3rd Town of Austin planning board work session. And let's start with introductions of the consultant staff and board. I'll go in just the order that I see on my screen. Margaret?
Margaret Khan, filling in for Sandy and Ellie. Secretary.
Kathy?
Kathy Zalantis, planning board attorney.
Valerie?
Valerie Manostro, planning board consultant.
Carol, Carolyn?
Carolyn Stevens, planning board member with the noisy dog.
What's the dog's name? We need to know that.
His name is Jake.
Jake. Donna?
Donna Sharrett, planning board member, no dog.
Dan?
NCRCA consulting engineer at the planning board.
Jim? Can't hear you.
Jim Bucina, as planning board member.
And I'm Gareth Huffam, planning board chair. So, for, for those who have signed in from the public, I'd like to just give a little explanation of what tonight's meeting is going to be about. So, the purpose of tonight's meeting will be to review the supplemental draft environmental impact statement for the River Knoll project. And this is to, to review it for completeness, completeness only, and relative to what we asked for during the scoping meeting process and the resulting outline document. Also, I want to mention that what we have in front of us now, and what has been made available to the public already, is a draft only, and it's not yet to be relied upon for completeness or correctness until after board members and consultants have asked for any changes to be made, changes or additions. Then, once we ask for changes and those changes are made and submitted at a different meeting, what, we will, we will accept the document as complete. And at that point, we will schedule a public hearing, at which time the members of the public can offer their, their comments. And I, once it is available as an accepted document instead of the draft, I would encourage you to read it carefully and come prepared to, to speak your, speak your minds on it. Give us comments and we look forward to that. So, let's see. So, we're going to start tonight's meeting with asking the applicant Glenn Vetromile and his consulting engineer and Bob Peak to give us a short introduction. And then we will ask our consultants and the board members to give their comments regarding the completeness of the document. And we'll go chapter by chapter to keep it organized. So with that, Glenn, do you want to share your screen?
Okay, Margaret, how do I share my screen? Oh, there it is, on the bottom, share screen. That makes sense. Here we go. Okay, can everybody see that? Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. So, let me scroll through this. We have a lot of tonight, we felt it was important before we got into, going into the details of the revised SEIS, that there needed to be our concepts behind moving to the 55-plus community. And also, we have received a couple of letters from neighbors with a lot of questions, and we wanted to make sure the public, who I assume there are some people from the public on right now, that they heard our thoughts behind what has occurred. So I'm kind of a brief PowerPoint, and I'll walk through it now. So, the prior plan was 188 units, and it was a rental community sitting on top of the bluff of the Stony Lodge Hospital side, 188 units rental with a parking podium underneath and a center lobby and amenities. And there seemed to be difficulty in people understanding this concept. And so, we began, but I just wanted to give people a little bit of history of where we've come from. We began our discussions in the fall of 2014 with the prior administration, and then we submitted our first document at the end of the next year, 2015. And once again, it's on the prior plan. And in the intervening years, we have submitted another six, five subsequent documents, EISs and FEISs. And those are just, some of them stacked up in my office. But at least 20 to 30 copies of these each time were circulated to the town board, the planning board, consultants, et cetera. During our time before the town, we've had four planning board chairpersons, starting with George Weeks, then Ingrid, and Ching last time, and now Gareth. And this is kind of a chronology of the various events that we've done on the right column. You know, the various timings of the various submissions. So it's been, you know, a long process. This past spring, we ended up with a new scoping document, essentially the guideline that we follow. It was based on the prior scoping document from the prior 188 unit plan that you just saw. And it was modified to address the new project that we're proposing. The areas, the main areas are the land use, wetlands, soils, geology, stormwater, subsurface water, vegetation. We get into historical and archaeological resources, infrastructure, all the utilities, traffic in a very deep way, fiscal impacts, and construction impacts. During the course of our project, we've hired no fewer than 20 firms to prepare all that information. Because we have fiscal consultants, civil consultants, you name it, all different consulting firms that have weighed in on it. These are the documents that were submitted in September for this new plan. And then people may have not been on the site, I don't know who has or hasn't, but again, once again, a little refresher. This is the main building. This is the north facade. It's been highly, you know, compromised over the years, the interiors, all sorts of water damage. This is the eastern side going down the hill. This is the back of the site backing up to Pershing. This is, looking at that building, it was a game center for the kids in the hospital. This is the southeastern boundary, looking down towards Pershing. I'm sorry, the other one was grand, you met Pershing. And this is the southwestern site at the corner of Pershing and Crotton Dam Road. So, the revised alternative is an age-restricted 55-plus community, 85 of the units will be market rate, and 10 will be affordable pursuant to the town's Article 6. HOPA community is essentially, works within the HUD's Fair Housing Act. And it allows for 80% of the units, requires 80% of the units to have at least one person that's 55 years or older. And then it was, it can restrict that there be no, no individuals under the age of 19. And it's administered in large part by the Department of State. So, the new plan, we've tried very hard to keep the front meadow along Crotton Dam Road open again. And then, the, can you see my pointer? This is the rock face that exists today. When you look at the site, we're maintaining all of that, not touching it, that's the steepest part of the site. And then we have the entrance at the existing, at the current location. And we have a community building, which will have fitness center, a pool, community room, and all sorts of activities for the, the community. Excuse me, I went up, got to go down. This is sitting on, or driving on, probably in the wrong lane. Crotton Dam Road heading east and looking up towards the top of that bluff. And you're starting to get a sense of the architecture, which is a contemporary farmhouse style, which is very popular. We think it's very clean. Very, very, I think it's very appropriate and complimentary to the surrounding homes. This is an interior view, all of the units will have garages, two-car garages. This is a lineup of eight units. Some of the affordable units actually will look like these units. You can see the detailing on the railings, more contemporary, standing seam roofs over the outdoors, baton, clapboard siding. And a lot of thought of the detail of what we're talking about. Some of the units have sloping sites, which allows for a lower walkout and lower levels. And many of the units will have a second office if people want to option that, or their own, in, inside a little fitness room. We expect because of the 55-plus orientation of the project, that there will be many couples that will want to work from home. People typically, you know, empty nesters and, you know, pre-retirees are not typically those that commute peak hours, and a lot of them like to work from home, particularly with COVID. Another view. The plan has, we think, a fair amount of green space. We have been careful to, once again, keep the front meadow green. There will be stormwater swales that will be for most of the time dry, and if you get a major rain event, they will fill up, but then slowly drain out. There's a, there's a stormwater system in Crotton Dam Road. This is Crotton Dam Road here. Pershing Grand View is up here, and then Narragansett is here. We have small wetland up here near, near Narragansett. We are outside of the setback of that wetland. We have two emergency access axes, one here that goes out to Narragansett, and one that goes down here to Crotton Dam Road. Those will be gated. And let me just show you the next slide. They're going to be green surfaces with GeoGrids. So they're weight-bearing, so emergency vehicles can go across them, but you know, 99% of the time, they'll just look green. And then, really, it's a very simple design. There's just essentially two cul-de-sacs. A road that runs behind here with a cul-de-sac, double-loaded here. And another road in the front that follows the existing secondary road that's already in the site. And again, it's double-loaded on top. These will have, all of these units will have extraordinary views, most of them Hudson, because Hudson's out here. And you stand up here now, you can see way out to the Hudson. It'll be beautiful. And then again, the community building sitting down here at the entry point, which will be something that will make very attractive. So, the, within the current EIS from the prior project, because this, this process we're going through now is an extension of the existing EIS. And one of the alternatives in that is alternative, a townhouse unit using the current MF zone, multifamily zone. And so, this was the alternative that we've now modified. We only have one entrance, and we have less density. This one had 132 units. Once again, we're only talking about 95 units. So, the projects will appeal, excuse me, the units will appeal in large part to empty nesters, people that whose children are off, they don't need a big house, they don't want to take care of the outside of a house, they've done it for 30-plus years. They'd rather buy condominium and have the exteriors, the roads, the snow, the gutters all taken care of by a professional organization. They still want an ample-sized homes because they have furniture and don't want to, you know, all the, they don't want to seem, feel crammed in having been in a, a large home. So these will be very ample, full kitchens, full walk-in closets. Again, two-car garages, and then the ability in the lowest level to have a second office and potentially a gym. All of these units will have a den. And they will also have four-by-four closets on each level, which will allow them to, if they want to, option to have a small elevator to go up and down as they age. Or they can just get it built day one. I've already described the HOPA community, D5-plus community, what it is. So, the five areas that tend to be, you know, the ones of focus are the fiscal, traffic, community character, connectivity, and sustainability. Quickly, the fiscal side of things, the current Stony Lodge Hospital now and for the past several years only throws off $98,000 to the town. The, our plan will throw off $1,125,741,000 of that will go to the school. There are no kids that will go to the school district. A firm called Phillips Price, they're based in Hoboken. They are kind of the go-to fiscal consultants that many of us use, both on the private and public side. And so, they use the Rutgers methodology. The Rutgers methodology is also the same methodology that the school district uses to forward plan for the district to understand whether or not they need to expand or contract. I would say all of the school districts in the county and more use the Rutgers model for forward projecting for school kids. So the increase is over $1 million. And the increase over the services to provide for the project will be $800,000. Those services being police, ambulance, fire, et cetera. So, on the traffic side of things, the comparison always is, okay, what was the original project? In this case, Stony Lodge, when it was operative, what did it throw off in terms of peak AM and peak PM traffic? Its peak AM was 51 cars, its peak 50, peak was 60, peak PM. Our plan, because of the profile, throws off 19 in the morning and 25 at night. So it's a reduction of 32 trips in the morning, 35 at night, and you can see the percentage reductions. The reason this is, is once again, the profile of the buyer, they're older, they don't commute. Many, most of them don't commute at peak hours, they will commute. But they, not many of them, not that many commute at peak hours, and that's the reason for the big reduction. These are.
Glenn, let me just mention that I wanted to keep this introduction short and not get into, you know, substantive details.
Okay.
Can you wrap it up? Okay.
Yep. And then, the last thing, the last two things are, we were talking about community character, and the surrounding zoning is S50, which is 5,000 square foot lots, and then two small pieces of, these are the abutting zoning areas, is S7, 7.5, which is 7,500 square foot lots. And so, the simple math is, if you used the 5,000-foot lots in terms of our acreage, it would equate to 156 lots. We could, obviously, not, not taking into account steep slopes or infrastructure. And then similar with the 7,500 square foot lot, so we feel we're way below the adjoining properties. And then, there is a concern, not concern, but a desire upon the town to want to have connectivity. And we, our, our project will allow for kids And we, our, our project will allow for kids or whomever to connect out over to the Veterans Park. You know, children that are walking up and down Crotton Dam Road and then similarly those that are on Narragansett. And sustainability, we get into all sorts of sustainability designs. It's kind of built into the way we look at projects. That's it.
Okay. Thank you, Glenn. Yeah, I think, I think that was helpful to just, you know, set, set the stage for the discussion. So from here, I'd like to start by asking the consultants to talk about their reviews of of the document and the consultants and the board members. So why don't we start with Valerie?
Hey, so why don't, Glenn, can you stop sharing the screen so that?
Sure. If I can figure that out. I don't know.
Sandy, you might, I mean, Margaret, you might need to have him.
Glenn, it should be down on the bottom. You'll see a green option, share screen.
Okay.
Do you have that down on the bottom of your screen?
I don't. Hold on.
Try hitting escape.
Let me see.
I get the means.
Okay.
If I hit escape, sometimes you get more options from the bottom.
Why don't I log out and log back in?
Let me see if I, I'm going to try to do it here.
Have an option that says stop sharing screen?
No, I don't. I don't know where it is. Usually all that, here we go. Got it. Here. You cannot start screen. Okay. Can you? Did it go out?
There we go.
Yes.
Good.
It might actually make sense while we're having this discussion to move Glenn, I don't know, back into an attendee role.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. I, I think it's a good idea just to for efficiency of our discussion, if we have a question specifically that we want to ask, then we'll bring you back in.
Yeah, I think it would make sense to re-promote the end in this way, especially if you're consultant. Bob Peak has any questions, they could be asked. Valerie, do you agree?
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Okay. Thanks, Glenn.
That doesn't, that doesn't make sense to me, but okay.
I will try to move him back to just an attendee.
And I think.
So while, while Margaret's working on it, I'm going to get, I'll start talking about how we'll probably move through this evening. So it probably makes most sense if we sort of touch base on each of the topic areas in the EIS. And I'll, I'll summarize the comments that I had. Dan and Kathy will do as well. And then we'll kind of open it up to the board to see if you have any additional comments. The thought is that we'll take, basically take my memo that I produced, add your comments to that memo so that ultimately on November seventeenth, you can adopt, you know, an official version of official comments that will be going to the applicant for them to address. Does that work for everybody?
Yes.
All right. So why don't we, why don't we get started on the first topic if you want? I mean, I can either, if, if you have my memo in front of you, we can just kind of walk through the the individual chapters. If you need me to share the screen, I can do that as well. But I think the first, you know, couple of chapters is just really dealing with the cover sheet and table contents and chapter one executive summary. And we just, I just noted a couple of items that are missing, dealing with like the technical appendices. And also just a couple of formatting items in the initial executive summary. There are a couple of things in the overall, when we get to chapter two, the overall project description for project history. I had a couple of comments relating to the terminology used. And again, that's a little bit more formatting. I identified a concern with the definition of small lots that I didn't think that fit the residential neighborhoods of Cherry Hill and Pheasant Bridge. And then also in terms of Crotton Dam Road, just the way it's being characterized, it's not really a cut through, but an exit off of Route nine A. And then we were also noted that in part of the project description, dealing with the total number of parking spaces that those are required as part of the scope and that is missing. And then including also some public pedestrian access connections are not identified in the SDIS. Roadway portions we felt are brief and it should be expanded upon. And then also both the sections for maintenance of common elements just, and also timeline of ongoing maintenance of all proposed mitigation for the proposed action. We felt that those sections did not discuss roads and utilities and passive open space. And then finally, the project purpose and need, public need and benefits for that, we felt that there needed to be additional evidence on the public need for proposed project. So those were our initial comments dealing with the project description and project history. Kathy, did you have any comments that you wanted to add to that?
Yeah. So on the executive summary, I noted like three comments that are just adding history that are missing and clarification. One statement that came out in the executive summary was that each market rate townhouse will have attached to car parking. And I didn't see this thought carry through in the document. It may have been, but I didn't see it at all. But certainly, I don't know if the applicant is trying to distinguish and only provide garages on market rate townhouses and not the affordable townhouses. And I think that's something that needs to be addressed and specified. There was also a few conclusory statements or overstatements on the exact, in the executive summary on pages twenty-two and twenty-three about school age children, like for example, it says, because this is an age restricted community, no school age children will reside within the community and thus no demographic impacts to the school district is anticipated. It's my understanding of the law that school age students, children cannot be precluded if they're part of the family. So I think the way that it's phrased, it's, it's really an, an overstatement. You could certainly say there's going to be very little or, you know, but to say like, there won't be one school age child in the whole entire development seems like an overstatement and a conclusory statement, and that needs to be addressed. There was also, you know, some references to wooded periphery that needs further clarification and definition. If that's a term that's going to be used throughout this document. We can go on to the next portion.
I hear, I hear background. Did, Dan, did, did you want to make any comments on this chapter?
Yeah, no, I don't have anything on the executive summary.
Okay. Any board member comments on the executive summary?
And also project description.
And project description, chapter two.
On the executive session where you state that River Knoll submitted a draft SDEIS to the planning board on September thirtieth. But the planning board, we didn't technically get that till the sixth. Is that, because there's a forty-five day requirement, correct? That we have to respond?
Yes, that's correct. We'll have them update that.
So it'll be October sixth?
Yes. I mean, October sixth. I mean, I mean, yes, October sixth, sorry.
So we're just talking about executive summary, right?
And the project description.
Oh, okay. So the project. Chapter two.
It's chapter, chapter one, chapter one B, project description.
That's chapter two, right?
Yes.
Right.
Oh.
So number five, Valerie, you commented that that about the pedestrian access and the road break, roadway portions are brief. But I would also say that the landscape, landscaping information is completely missing. They speak often about vegetated buffers, and I don't really know what they're talking about with that. And then the street trees are mentioned, but only on the interior streets. So there's no mention of street trees along Crotton Dam Road. Yeah. And then on, on page, you know, two seventy, they're talking about aesthetic resources and scenic views. Again, they're saying substantially buffered and dense existing and proposed, proposed vegetation. So I'm not really sure what that is. And I think that's it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot to raise another point that I have in my memo that is with this is the, the applicant's document, but the final the SFEIS will be our document. So when the applicant is making opinions and statements, that has to be presented as the applicant's opinion. So in the context of the applicant's position is that there's no demand on public recreation areas. So that, that has to be presented as the applicant's opinion because I'm not, I don't, I'm not sure that the board would necessarily agree that there is no impact on, on recreation that the town offers so that there wouldn't be the necessity for a recreation fee.
Donna, you have more?
I just have a general comment that they there, they didn't use any scientific or common, they only used like a, like a real genus level identification, common genus level identification on the trees on that tree preservation plan. And also I, I would, it's my opinion that it's not an accurate plan because when I was on the, the site view, I site walk, I saw at least two magnolias and there's no magnolias on here. So it just, you know, it's, it's, I think it's a really important piece of the review and I think it should be accurate and complete and it should have the scientific names. And that's in the scoping document, it says that it should, so.
Scientific names, meaning genus and species.
The scientific Latin.
Right.
And the common name. So everybody knows what's going on. Because right now it says maple. That could be like twelve different things. And then some of the trees are identified as deciduous, which is way too broad.
Anything more, Donna? Jim?
I mean, since, since Donna's bringing up some of the vegetative buffers, we have discussed in the past, the the possibility of implementing a buffer similar to the residential to business kind of separation on, on the site. It's something that I'm going to be interested in having some screening between the existing homes and the, and the, and the new project itself. And in general, I mean, since day one, I've been pretty much, you know, comparing what's been proposed to the to the conventional layout with conventional zoning. Not the R five, I think it's R fifteen. So if we're going to be doing apples to apples, I'd like that to be in the discussion when, when we're comparing this project to what's currently zoned for.
Yeah, and we'll get to that. And then they get to the alternatives chapter. I think that's, has that in there.
Okay.
Anything else, Jim?
No, that's it.
Okay, Carolyn?
No, I was also concerned about the comparison of the, the present zoning to what's being proposed, but Jim covered that, so we're good.
I, I had just a question about whether the view shed impacts could be discussed. I didn't really see it under heading anywhere. That is, speaking about what the project looks like from both nearby communities and from a distance. And we did that in the original project in particular, because it was, you know, we were thinking that it would be quite prominent on top of the hill from, you know, Briar Cliff and surrounding areas. So I think we need to have a section that speaks about the view shed impact.
So that, that's another chapter coming up after we get past the project description. So we'll, we'll touch on that in like a couple of minutes.
Great.
Okay. Go ahead, Valerie.
So why don't I, yeah, why don't I go on to the land use conference of plans, zoning and community character and the items that we found incomplete. So in terms of so in terms of the land use, in terms of the actual proposed project, there were a number of items in the scope that we found that were incomplete. One was that there was no comparison made to the surrounding neighborhoods and no visual. This is where your visual analysis was prepared of the potential visual impacts from the proposed project from the various vantage points on the surrounding neighborhoods in the Hudson River. And that was specifically identified in the scope, along with no discussion on lighting or sign, it was provided. We also found that the section does not discuss the Westchester County two thousand and nineteen housing needs assessment. It does discuss affordable housing, but does not mention this plan. This was something that was also part of the scope. The additional, in section two D, we also found that complete because additional explanation on how the project aligns with the current conference plan is needed. That's, and the section does not discuss the project's consistency with the proposed plan draft documents that are available. Also, in section two F, we found that this section does not address the potential impacts of the proposed MF zoning district to the MF two zoning district. So the, just for clarification, MF zoning district is the one that they're proposing now, where the MF two zoning district was the one they were posing before. So they were supposed to discuss an overall impact between one project scheme over the other. Also, we found that in section two G, that was incomplete because more information's needed to complete the discussion of any possible relevance to spot zoning. This was another issue that was brought up and it was very, very brief. And we felt that that did not really discuss in detail the issue of spot zoning and why this would or not be constitute spot zoning. Also, on page three eight dash, A dash eight, we found that states eighty-eight market rates where eighty-five is stated earlier in the document. And I think that's something Gareth, you asked me the other day about the total number of units. So there is some discrepancy within the document, whether it's total of ninety-eight units versus ninety-five units. So those need to be, that also needs to be identified and worked out throughout the document. And then landscaping, we also noted was referenced, but no plan was provided. Renderings were provided, but no elevations and no zoning table was provided. And we also felt that the mitigation portions of this particular chapter were very brief. And again, landscaping was referenced, but no plan was provided. And, and then areas to be preserved have also been not identified in layout plan, but yet they're discussed in the narrative. So that all needs to be provided as well. And I think that could die, coincides with the items that Donna was coincides with the items that Donna was bringing up earlier. So that concludes my comments.
Okay, Kathy? On land use?
So I noted three instances where the applicant is making statements that have to be identified as the applicant's opinion. You know, again, it's in the context of recreational. So, you know, for example, the doc says it's the applicants tend to provide extensive onsite recreational opportunities. So there will be little recreational impacts associated with the proposed project. And that that conclusion is applicant's opinion. And there's two other instances like that.
Can you you speak of those? Right?
Yes.
Dan?
Um, yeah, as far as, you know, we do, we looked at the the stormwater stuff. I mean, it was pretty comprehensive. As far as completeness, I think we're there. We will do it, you know, much deeper dive once the the document is accepted. But, you know, our focus really was just on the stormwater and the utility stuff. The utilities we had looked at on the prior application where there was more density. So the what we concluded on the other project that the water and sewer could be handled. So with a lesser number of units, that still holds true.
Okay. I was skipping ahead to D, but that that that's fine.
Well, you know, it's it's
That's good.
My focus is fairly limited on this thing that, you know, I'm really just looking at the underlying infrastructure issues.
Okay, great. Valerie, did did you want to?
Did the board have any comments on the on the land use?
On land use, yeah, A, three A. Jim?
Yeah, I think I kind of commented already on that.
Okay.
Okay, Carolyn?
No. What we mentioned before.
Okay, Donna?
So I'm not sure if this was like what we talked about before or if this is appropriate now, but in addition, like when you're talking about lighting, so I'm not sure if that's in this section or not. They're showing pictures. It is, okay. They're showing pictures. They have a lot of pictures of of in here of of projects, which I don't know if which ones are going to actually look like this one. But some of them have these very large walls of windows. And most of the lighting impacts, we're talking about exterior lights, but when you have large walls of windows like that, that is, that is definitely a light, you know. That's going to be very visible. So I would want to know how those are going to be screened also. If you're having you know, it looks like a whole, I I don't know if that's this project or not. It's hard to tell because also, he's, you know, he's speaking about two car garages, but when we're looking at the pictures, there's a one car garage. So I'm not really sure what it is that we're you know, which one we're looking at. But if there is these vaulted lights, I would like to see what impact that has on the neighbors and the Hudson River and all that. So.
So I think that's probably, that's probably a more substantive comment as opposed to completeness comment. But what we can do is ask them to clarify those visual images that they submitted as as to what the intent of those images are to, you know, convey.
Okay, and my other on the sidewalks, and so I'm not sure if this is also appropriate or not, but please let me know. It's it's saying that there's no sidewalks because there's not going to be a lot of traffic and, you know, people are going to be walking in the road. So that seems really dangerous to me. So I just, I think that should be explained more, why they think there's going to be so little traffic that people, all these ninety-eight units of people walking in the roads is not going to be a problem, particularly with our current culture of having every little minutia of our life delivered to us in these zooming delivery trucks. So that's that's something that I think should be addressed.
Okay.
I I had a comment about the emergency exits. I thought that when we were talking at previous meetings, we got agreement from the applicant that those would also be for a pedestrian use. And I know that Glenn mentioned that use in his introduction. But it's not written, at least it's not shown on the plans that way. And I think that it should be so that it says emergency vehicle exit and, you know, you know, permanent or whatever the right phrase is, pedestrian and bicycle access. So not just emergency pedestrian access. So I'd like to to see that specified in the plans as as well as you know, discussed. Also, previously discussed, we're having, I was having openings from some of the adjacent avenues like First Avenue, I think, let me look. First and Second Avenue, so that if kids or whatever from those streets, you wanted to zip through to Veterans Park or or so they could do that. But that was not included in this plan. So I'd like to see some discussion of that and if the applicant still agrees to include that to show it. That's my comment on that, Valerie.
Sure, hold on. Okay. All right, so we can go on to the next chapter then. The next chapter was wetlands, and for the most part, this project is not anticipating disturbing the wetlands or having any sort of our wetlands buffer area. So there was just a couple of minor comments involved in this, and it was just that the village law, a village of Austin has updated the wetlands law, so the text should revive, be revised to reflect that new law. And then the the section doesn't discuss potential new disturbance to water courses and water course buffers as a result of the proposed project, including any new analysis of any impact to vegetative cover the proposed project. And a comparison is not made to the impacts identified in the two thousand eighteen DEIS of the former project, the proposed project. So in all reality, I think this this particular chapter can easily be updated. It just needs to be, you know, meet the what's required in the scope.
Kathy?
I had no comments on this chapter.
Dan?
No, I don't have anything on the wetlands.
Okay, Jim?
I'm fine.
Donna?
No.
And Carolyn?
No.
I had one comment on it and I wasn't sure if if the sinks, if the potential impact of sink sink kill was addressed. Specifically, that is the wetland, which is way downhill. But if there would be additional volume being sent to the sink sink kill as opposed to the other side, because I know that the the drainage patterns between the existing site and the proposed site are very different. And by the way, I'd like to thank the applicant for the colored drawings, plans showing that. I think that was very helpful indeed. But I am a little concerned about the impact on the sink sink kill, so I'd like to have that discussed specifically.
So that's a substantive comment. We don't have anything about the sink sink kill in the in the scope right now.
Okay, that is, that's that's the wetland that would be affected. So, okay.
So technically, the scope dealing with the wetlands, we specifically are just asking for a new disturbance to or crossing of wetland, wetland buffers, water courses and water course buffers as a result of the proposed project. So they can make note of, you know, of if there's going to be any disturbance to those wetlands or water courses. At this point in time, they're proposing not to have any disturbance to the wetland buffer area or the wetlands themselves. But we can ask specifically about the sink sink kill at the next round. So just save that comment on the side, and then we can ask that as part of the FEIS.
Okay, and and that probably belongs more in the stormwater management part anyway. So, okay, very good. Go ahead, Valerie.
So the next, the next chapter, this one, I think, is is definitely something that we probably should spend a couple of minutes talking about, and that's the soils, topography, steep slopes and geology chapter. There's a few concerns that I have in terms of completeness. First is the the narrative notes that blasting is may be required. And we really felt just overall that, you know, it didn't really provide a lot of information as to the the amount of blasting. You know, there was one part of the narrative we're discussing may be required. Another part of the narrative says that a hydraulic hammer would be used instead of blasting. But then there's a tremendous amount of times that throughout the document that they talk about blasting is probably going to be required. So more information on blasting, rock removal, I think is important. The duration, you know, the overall intensity of that of that work. Also, in terms of steep slopes, the applicant did not provide information on the compliance with the steep slopes protection section one sixty-seven dash two of the Austin code. And one of the things that I think is really important is that there is certain prohibitions on building on excessively steep slopes. And so, or excuse me, extremely steep slopes. And so that needs to be rectified in terms of the overall project. But then also in terms of if there are waivers, there are some waivers that the planning board can provide, but then they need to really provide information as to why how why those waivers would be met at the planning board. The other thing that I think is really important deals with the overall conditions that the project meets outlined in one sixty-seven five B. Again, it's really dealing with the overall cut and fill of the site. And in the drawings that were provided or the in the plans that were provided, we felt that they were not adequate enough to really relay to the public as to the intensity of the cut and fill that's going to take place on site. There are certain areas in which the fill itself was looking like to be, you know, over twenty feet in terms of leveling out the proposed project site. And we feel that that site was just not, that whole chapter was just too brief and did not provide enough information for the public to really adequately understand what they're proposing to do on site and the impacts involved with that. And I do think that to some extent, the steep slopes regulations could affect the overall project, the proposed project and the site layout that they're proposing at this point.
Kathy?
I had the same comment about extremely steep slopes. And I mean, that's just something that was not addressed adequately. There is, as Valerie said, a prohibition in the code. And you're allowed to grant a waiver under certain circumstances, and namely that it only be for ingress and egress and subject to certain requirements. So you know, without knowing what the areas are and what they're being proposed for, and there's no discussion of it in the document. I mean, it's really hard to ascertain whether you even meet compliance with this provision. When when they're admitting that there is, there'll be ten percent disturbance of extremely steep slope areas. So that's something that 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 needs to be clarified and and further detail provided to really understand the proposed impact. And I think like Valerie said, it could impact the whole project design potentially. And then I, there was a section where mitigation measures were discussed in the section about this project. And that just needs to be taken out and made clear. I think all the mitigation measures should be in one section and not discussed in the proposed pod project section.
Any comments from the board? Jim?
No, I'm fine.
Carolyn?
No.
And Donna?
I just had one comment. Where it's on, you know, three C six, where it talks about the permitted hours of construction as as required by the our noise code. I just think because this is going to the public, I think it just would be great just to list those hours just that they're right there and that people don't have to try to figure that out. So hopefully that just make it easier.
Yeah, that's a good comment. Clarifies it.
Yeah.
Let's see, I I had.
Dan, did you have any comments on the soils?
Yeah, I guess the the one main comment I had on this, I mean, there is a lot of cut and fill going on. But the the one thing I wanted to make sure that the board was aware of, which I think actually dovetails with one of your earlier comments, Jim, regarding the buffering to the adjacent properties and actually even Gareth, your comment about the access trail for the 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 homes in the village. The the retaining wall behind some of, you know, along the village boundary, it gets as high as thirty-four feet. So you know, I I don't know that I saw any like sections or anything through there, but I think the the board and the and the public really need to see at a minimum a section through there so you can sort of see the scale of how this wall is going to be looming above the houses below, and then you have the actual townhouses above it. So it's it's going to be quite a substantial structure, you know, between the walls and the and the residences and these folks back backyard. So screening is is, you know, critical to sort of to to soften that impact, which will be substantial.
I had.
Gareth, you're muted.
You just muted yourself.
I clicked it twice by accident. I wanted to ask Kathy and Valerie how you might suggest that the applicant show the the cut and fill better than they do. Is it more of a descriptive thing or calculations? Or showing, you know, the cross sections like Dan was mentioning graphically? Would you make any recommendations on how best to do that?
I think there should be more narrative on it. You know, they refer to figures. So you have to, you know, you have to understand what the figures are showing and, you know, and also to some extent, the comparisons. You know, I was flipping between a couple of different maps, and I think a narrative would be beneficial.
Because I think it's less about the steep slopes, Gareth, you know, because you could recreate a site and and not really have a major impact on adjacent properties. I mean, you have a site that's got a big old knoll on it that would be considered steep slopes, you could just level it off and you know, is that really an impact? You know, if anything, it could, you know, lessen the you know, how how a a project looks. But I guess this is really more of an aesthetics issue, you know, that it's not about how much cut and fill is moving around the site. It's really just you know, this this, what's going to be looming over those homes on that side of the project. Regardless of how much bill they got to put in.
Right, because then it's going to change the starting elevation of, you know, where the, how the homes are built. And but I also think too, to some extent, because we have this, you have the steep slopes law, that there has to be, you know, some consideration taken to make sure that the proposed project right now is going to conform to that law.
Yeah, I mean, I think that when you, when you enter the site and I gave it a name, but the road, as you enter the site where you Yeah, I mean, I think that when you when you enter the site and um, I gave it a name, but the road as you enter the site where you make a left. And and go up the hill. I mean, now those that work is generally following what's there now. You know, those units kind of sit on where the existing buildings are. So the the tricky thing is the. The 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 other set of uh. Of townhouses on that other road, the extension of the access road, because that's a steeper area. And and developing the 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 homes and putting a access road through there is is really more the challenge. That's that's the tougher part of the site to develop.
Okay, and so the applicant should discuss all of those considerations.
Yeah, I you know, as Valerie said, I think it could be touched on in a narrative and. You know, there isn't an outright prohibition uh, on the steep slopes. So you've got to, they've got to make their case. To be working in these extremely steep slopes. So that's, you know, I guess where the narrative would come in and and to show, you know, to demonstrate that they're. Developing the site uh, in the in the most sensible way.
Okay, thank you. Valerie?
Okay, um, so the next chapter is stormwater management. And subsurface water. So again, we looked at it directly, you know, Dan's really looking at it from the technical perspective. We just looked at it. We just identified certain elements. That were not um, according to the scope or were not included as per the scope. First is the proposed project and mitigation. Again, those two should be, those two sections should be separate. Pre and post development watershed maps were not included. And there was not a discussion on the potential impact of failed erosion sediment. Uh, sedimentation and stormwater control waters during construction, post-construction completion. Means of intercepting stormwater and associated materials were discussed, but we felt that the section did not address the potential. Short and long-term impacts of runoff, carrying fertilizers, pesticides, herbicides, you know. That we specifically requested them to uh, provide a little bit of a narrative on. And then also um. We also wanted them to provide number of acres of impervious coverage of the proposed project, um, because there are some. You know, there are some changes to that and it just needs to be clear as to what it again, what is being provided as part of, you know. Proposed as part of the project in terms of impervious coverage and stormwater. And um. And then we just noted also that some of those same elements that I discussed previously needed to be brought into the mitigation um, measures. So those that's really what I had for stormwater. So it's really less, it's really more of a in terms of. Did they discuss everything in the scope? I'm sure Dan will have has some technical comments. That's your cue, Dan.
Dan, you you.
I'll take that one, okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, I mean, I went through, you know, briefly went through the the SWIP. It looks like they 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 pretty much covered the bases. I need to. Go a little deeper into it. On on your comment Valerie, the uh, maybe the the pre and post-maps. On the SWIP document I got, they were included in a pocket in the in the in the SWIP. So that stuff was there. At least in my copy. But it looks like they, you know, they did a, and quite frankly, they really sort of appear to have over detained. Really, you know, hit really limited the peak flows and I think that may be in some ways. Related to the downstream conveyances. Because there were some issues last go around in terms of the capacity of some of the off-site stormwater conveyances. So we'll be, you know, looking to the applicant to make sure. Because even even if um, he's reducing the runoff rate below pre-development levels. We need to be sure that pre-development levels could be accommodated by the. The downstream infrastructure. So I think they did look at that last time around, but. We'll be sure to ask them to include that in their uh, in the analysis included in their slip.
Great, thank you. Kathy, anything on this?
No.
Board members? Jim?
No, I'm fine.
Donna?
Yeah.
And Carolyn?
No.
Okay, and um, I would just uh, want to uh. Restate that we'd like, you know, them to specifically address. Stormwater impacts to the Stingstein Kill, which is downhill and from the site. Uh, and since the drainage patterns are different now than they than they were originally. I just want to make sure that all of those calculations are are um, complete. With respect to, you know, volume and rate of runoff um, as as usual. That's all. Valerie?
Sure. Um, did did anybody else, any other board members have any comments? No, okay. So we'll move on to vegetation and wildlife. Um, so we did feel this particular section, we felt. Needed definitely a lot more information. First of all, we felt the section uh, first, the former project, it was, we specifically said it was going to list. Tier three and tier four species located on the property. This was not done. Um, in terms of the proposed project, we felt that the section did not um, discuss compliance with the town's tree law. Information on outdoor lighting and potential light trespass of outdoor lighting onto habitats was also not provided. Landscaping plan was not provided and we felt that the, an updated letter from New York State National Heritage Program is needed. The last one, I believe, was. Like in two thousand and sixteen. Um, also the, for the mitigation section, we felt that it did not provide an invasive species removal and management plan and the section does not. Make clear statement regarding protection of preserved tree root systems. So overall, there's a lot more information I think is needed in order to have this particular chapter complete in terms of understanding the. Impacts on the vegetation wildlife.
Kathy?
I didn't have anything on this chapter.
Dan?
Nothing for me.
Okay, uh, board members? Jim's uh, out of the room for a second. Donna?
I had a a couple of things. One is just a just as a a comment on 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 Valerie's comment, when you're um, just for the public's information, it's it's. And correct me Valerie, I might get this wrong, but it's tier three and four invasive species and that's, it's a listing by the DEC, correct? That's like New York State or is it PRISM?
Yeah, we had specifically in the scope, what I can tell you.
Just just so the public knows that that's, that's what we're, what tier three and four is.
Yeah, so it was specifically identified of tier three and four species listed in the Hudson Valley PRISM index.
The invasive species, right?
Yes.
Okay, and then um, on the mitigation. With the removal and management plan, that that should also include the duration of the the intended duration of the management plan. And then I had one comment in their document. On three E five and E six, they they reference. That all these changes can be made as required by the owner's field representative. And um, I guess that's, I don't know if that's something we can comment on now, but I I think that that would be someone not. Representing the owner would would make the calls for those changes. So like our tree warden or something.
Well, what we can do is we can say in the, it is the applicant's, like, we, right now, we can note it that it's the applicant's intent. You know, so that it's clear that it's not the board.
Right.
Agreeing with that. And then that can be a comment that we ask them to.
I wouldn't like that one at all. Right, okay. That's that's it for me.
Okay, Jim?
I mean, in general, the uh, you know, the applicants proposing attractive details throughout the project. I just want to do address uh, the screening and specifically that retaining wall that Dan Dan brought up. It's about it.
Okay, I've got nothing on on this one that hasn't already been covered. So Valerie?
Okay. So the next is um, historical and archaeological resources. Um, and also infrastructure and utilities. I, we found both those chapters complete, so we didn't have any comments on those. I don't know if anybody else had any comments on those two chapters. I think Dan spoke previously that he felt that they addressed. The issues and that he didn't foresee any utility or infrastructure concerns.
Okay, any of the board members on on this, historical and archaeological resources? Infrastructure and utilities? Nope, okay. Nor do I.
So the next chapter is uh, traffic and transportation. So just to give the board an update. The town is retaining a traffic engineer. They will have a a comment letter on completeness by November eighth. So it'll be before your next board meeting um, for your consideration. We, um, the town is retaining um, Jim, uh, John Canning from Kimberly Horn. So he will be part of like the project team and um, as requested by this board. He was not involved in prior projects and he is familiar with uh, Westchester County. In terms of our comments on completeness, really, we only had one comment in this. Doubt with the number of employees by phase, the charts referenced in K, three K, do not include the number of employees. By phase, which are required by the uh, scoping document. So other co- traffic comments may be forthcoming, um, but I don't have them currently, but I'm here to take any comments. That you might have on that section and I'll work that into the next um, memo.
Sorry, I I missed a beat there. Are you talking about uh?
If you have any comments on the traffic.
On the traffic, okay.
Yes. Now, one thing I just want to, you know, they are um. They are proposing slightly, you know, the last round, there was going to be more intensive traffic at that intersection of Route nine A. So. You know, they are taking into consideration now what what this new development is going to do for traffic. But again. The traffic engineer will have comments on completeness and then they'll have more substantive comments as we go through the EIS process.
Okay, good. Any thoughts from the board on that or Kathy, Dan?
Yeah, I had noted um, that I did not appear to see a response to the scopes H two A. Which was the description of internal vehicle transportation discussion of proposed bicycle parking. But didn't see a discussion of how the proposed project aligns with the town's complete street policies, which is in the scope H two B. Um, and then I also had the same point that Valerie just made that, you know, I just want the board to be clear that they're no longer. Proposing the mitigation measures of the prior project that were um, proposed at the intersection of New York nine A. And Quoten Dam Road. And you know, that's something that I just noted that the traffic engineer is really going to have to review that. Substantively to see if that allows.
To see if uh, it it. No longer needed.
Yeah, they're they're taking the position that that could be a mitigation or not, that it was not a required, they're not required to do that mitigation. As part of this project, but that's something that the town could consider doing on its own. It's a position taken in the document. And you know, substantively, we need the our traffic engineer to review that to see if that's supported or. You know, what, if that position has merit, there is no longer the need for that prior traffic mitigation measure.
Okay, and I'd like to point out that, you know, these traffic issues are are bound to be one of the most important. Topics of discussion for the community. So these uh, these issues of additional delays of the light. Uh, at that intersection are very critical to to understand very well and to understand the alternatives. Let's see, Dan, anything on on this?
I'm going to defer to the the traffic consultant that we retained for this and, you know, that's, that's why we would have him on the team. It's outside of of my expertise.
Okay. Board member comments, Jim?
No comments.
Carolyn?
No comments. We'll wait and hear what the consultant has to say.
And Donna? No, can't hear you.
I feel the same. I I wait to see what the other comments are and appreciate that we're getting that advice.
Sounds good. Okay, thank you. Valerie, go ahead.
Okay, so community facilities, the only comment that I had was that we, the scope required that um. That we've, that they would look for specifically, well, this this kind of blends community facilities and also fiscal impacts. That the scope would look at um, other fifty-five and older. Examples of student generation. Um, that was not provided. Also, um, the age restriction regulations I anticipated for the fifty-five and older, I think, needs to be discussed as well. Because there's different variations of the, you know, fifty-five and older restrictions dealing with who's living in. Your apartments and we feel that that needs to be clarified because they keep stating that there'll be no school kids. And I think Kathy raised that at the beginning as well, that there needs to be some clarification as to what the restrictions would be. For this overall site, especially if they're stating that they're not going to be providing any school children. And then the last was um, really, we think that uh. That we, they need to provide the specific examples and comparable. And that it does not include a discussion on the proposed contribution to the Austin School District as identified in two thousand and eighteen FEIS. And at this point, they're not anticipating um, making a contribution to the Austin School District. So we think that just needs to be, those comparisons need to be clarified a little bit more. More information is needed. To demonstrate their backing of the um. The no kids. I understand they use the Rutgers numbers, but a lot of times the Rutgers numbers are basically your your standard. But a lot, but if you really want to get more detailed information, it's best to actually have case studies. And examples from comparable community, uh, comparable developments to really demonstrate what you're most likely going to get. In this particular market and also the um, Booker studies now are older. They're, they were back from like two thousand and six. So, you know, they're less reliable than they used to be. Although that's, I will say that that's unfortunately, that's the real standard that we are left with because Rutgers never updated their numbers. So that's usually the standard you start with and then you try to um, you build upon your case with comparables and that needs to be done.
Kathy, anything further on that?
I mean, Valerie mentioned the same comment and from the executive summary that I raise here that, you know, it's a, that there needs to be. More clarification because I think it sounds like a lot more, an overstatement to say no definitively. That no school age children will reside within this community. I don't know how, what the support is to say that.
Yeah, if there are different interpretations of that, they would have to be very clear what they're referencing. And whether or not that's, you know, uh. Within, you know, regulations of the town of Austin, right?
Well, show me the regulation that says if you have a parents that have a, that one of the parent is fifty-five years and old, older. That you can't have a child reside in that condo.
Right, because that's not what we heard previously.
Right, and that's not my understanding of the law either, that you could preclude uh, children that are. You know, a family from from, you know, and and certain people that are fifty-five and over have younger kids.
Okay, so we need serious clarification on that. Any comments from the board on this, Jim?
During the presentation of the previous project, uh, the apartment complex. The applicant submitted information on similar projects elsewhere to justify the numbers and. They were pretty close. And they were pretty close to what they were presenting. So there's no reason why we can't do the same on this on this project.
Carolyn?
I know that that I think it's W X Y who is also doing work on the master plan, I believe. That they have done some a number of school studies for I know they did some for New Rochelle and I think at least one or two other, I think, maybe Tarrytown.
Yes, they did, but they did it. They did it on school generation of like multifamily housing. I don't, I mean, I
but I don't know if they did it. They, you know, they might be able to, they don't, I know that they use a method other than the Rutgers method, I believe.
I think they usually just call the they get the data from like the developers in the school districts.
Okay, I I thought they were they were doing some 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 work in that area. I just if maybe if we want to have some additional support, you know, one way or the other, it's it's a thought since they already doing some stuff on the master plan.
Well, I think the developer can, the applicant, I think, can easily provide this information. They just need to, they just need to make the phone calls and do the work.
Donna?
Questions?
Valerie?
Okay, we'll go to the next.
Yep.
All right, so the last, one of the last chapters that they had to take a look at was construction impacts. And again, our biggest concern dealt with the rock removal and the blasting, both in terms of, you know, the intensity, information on what's really going to be required, and also the overall construction management plan was missing. Again, the biggest concern is, you know, the neighboring neighborhoods and properties and, you know, what what blasting is really going to be required and the work that that's going to be entailed in that.
Kathy?
I didn't have anything on this chapter.
Dan?
I have nothing on this either.
Jim?
No, no, nothing.
Carolyn?
Nothing.
And Donna?
I have a few things. So the first off, it's the hours that they're proposing, which is in the town law, that's probably not something we could discuss at this point, correct? That'd be later.
We wanted to have them set forth what the hours were. I think that's fine for that additional clarification to require that.
Yeah, because they're saying they're going to be basically working every day and and the holidays. And so and the neighbors would have to deal with this every single day, which is is completely unreasonable. So I don't know if this is the time to.
Don't we have hours set forth in the zoning code?
We did, and I checked, and it actually they what they have in that D E I S actually conforms with what's in the code.
Yeah, so it's eight to eight on Monday through Friday and nine to five Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays. That's completely unreasonable. But, um, so anyway, maybe that's for a different time, that discussion.
Yeah.
That will be a discussion. So then, under the under the where this the construction sequence, there's a couple, I have a couple of comments. So right, right before they demolished the existing buildings, it's it's my understanding because because I had to go through this with the demolition of an of a adjacent building. And I wasn't notified. I had all my windows open, and I believe the town board did change that that the neighbors have to be notified. So in that construction, so that would have to be checked. It really should be, they should be notified before there's demolition or or any kind of blasting, but that would have to go into that construction sequence for either, I mean, I do think the neighbor should be notified on either blasting or the demolition, so they they can close their windows. And also, can they identify, I didn't see anything, and I'm not sure if this is the place, the time to do this, but will they be identifying how they're going to determine the contaminants that are involved in those buildings before all that dust is released? Is that something that they they can include include in this document, like what analysis has been determined that's in those buildings? Because, I mean, it could be any number of things, and that would be an impact.
Yeah, I was, I was going to bring that up as well, both asbestos and lead paint, because these are very old buildings. And I know during demolition.
Yeah.
These very old buildings, usually the the asbestos is is taken out, but the lead paint just gets airborne. And that that can be a problem, so it should be discussed. I agree with you.
And asbestos shingles are used also, that that could be that could be a case. So, under dust control, they list here that you know, they they can wet down anything with water. So this is what happened behind me. They like sort of ran a hose up and down when they were demolishing the building. And, you know, the the dust was enveloping my house. When I consulted the building department, they told me that at best sixty percent of the dust can be contained. I think that information should be in here. If they're going to be doing the demolition, that they should state how much material is going to be trespassing onto other, onto the residents' properties and what mitigation measures would will they can do to prevent that or what they will do afterwards. If if anybody gets all of this stuff on their properties, because some of those houses are, I think, I believe, are kind of close to some of those old buildings. So I think they need to give more detailed information about that. And if there's alternative methods, that would be less impactful to the neighbors. And that's it for me.
Carolyn, did you speak on this one? Sorry. I lost track.
No, no.
You're good. Okay. And Jim, you're good on this one, right?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to support Donna's notions on the contaminants. I've seen that happen many times with demolitions where the contractors just, you know, sort of wave a hose around and and really does not contain it. So I'd like, I don't know if, I mean, this is getting more specific than than what we should be doing. But I should mention that they should at least discuss the option of monitoring, you know, during the demolition process. Discuss what alternatives exist for monitoring airborne contaminants. So that's all I had on that.
All right, so if we don't have anything else, the last section is alternatives. And so we have two fairly well, we have three comments on this. And the first is a general comment, or actually, two of them are general comments. One deals with the steep slopes. That section again, that prohibits disturbance of extremely steep slopes because of the fact that right now that they are planning to just they the way they have the layouts for each one of the alternatives, the assumption is they are going to disturb those extremely steep slopes. There is also an assumption in there that they will be also disturbing wetlands and wetland buffer areas. And there's also an assumption in there, and I have the I mixed up the numbers, but it's actually from the subdivision chapter instead of, I have one sixty seven eighteen F. It really should be one seventy six eighteen F. But in that particular section in the subdivision chapter, you're there is specific requirements for excluding watts as developable area in terms of that at least seventy five percent of the minimum lot area requirement of a post lot shall neither consist of wetland or extremely extremely steep slopes. And that also has not was not done when they undertook the alternatives and what they're proposing for the alternatives. So our concern is that the alternatives as presented do not reflect a true depiction of what could be built on that site. And that goes back to Jim's comments dealing with the conventional subdivision lot. Also, in terms of one of the proposals was to take, one of the alternatives was to take the conventional subdivision lot and actually then cluster that. But what they ultimately did was the conventional subdivision lot, they said they could get thirty lots. And then with the clustering, they said they could get thirty five. And that's not the intent of that alternative analysis as well. It really is meant to take the conventional subdivision lot and then cluster it so that you could see what a cluster design would look like on that particular site. So I do think that there are changes that they need to make to each one of those alternatives. And then that will affect ultimately their overall comparison of the alternatives to the proposed action.
Kathy?
Yeah, I had had a comment in in my memo. In one of the alternatives, it specifically says.
Kathy, you're frozen. I don't know if you can hear us.
First, there's no explanation as to that, but that that's.
Kathy, you were frozen for about ten seconds. Could you start again?
Sorry, can you hear me?
I can hear you now, but you were frozen, so we couldn't hear you. Could you start again?
Yeah, sorry, yes, sorry. I was just saying I had, I raised similar comments to what Valerie just said about the steep slopes. And in in one instance, they say that they did a calculation based on the town's steep slopes regulations. But in the other alternatives, there's not that similar language, so it's not comparing in in my mind, apples to apples. So we need further clarification on on that in the alternative so that we can ensure that what the board is assessing are actual true alternatives.
Dan, anything on that?
No, I don't have anything on this.
Jim?
No, Valerie summed it up.
Carolyn?
No, as Jim said, Valerie summed it up, so.
Donna?
On C particularly, it looks, and you did mention this, Valerie, but I don't see it listed in here in your in your comments. But you but you said it, that it does, that particularly number C does seem to have the potential to impact the wetland and buffer, so they they need to to show that too.
Yeah, I'll make sure I make add that specifically.
I mean, it might be the other ones too, but that's that's the one that really stood out, number C.
So my only comment is that I agree Valerie and Kathy summed up that well. But I wanted to point out that this was a a serious area of contention in the last, in discussions with the community, the last, in the original pro proposal. And so it's very important that the alternatives that are presented are ironclad you know, approvable plans. So, you know, not, you can't stretch that because you'll be taken to task. So be very careful about that alternatives analysis. Valerie?
So that pretty much sums up, I think, the last few sections I found were complete except dealing with some of the technical appendices, which those can easily be amended. So I think for the most part, if the board doesn't have any other comments on this, what I will do is I took notes and I will incorporate this board's comments. And maybe it just might make sense, Kathy, if I incorporate your comments into the overall table that I developed. And then that way, we'll send you, I'll send the board a draft table for your review. And then you can discuss it at the November seventeenth meeting and then adopt those as comments on completeness, and we can send those over to the applicant.
Okay, Kathy, do you have any?
No, I think that makes sense and that would be one document then.
Okay, board members, do you have any final thoughts, Jim?
That's it, thank you.
Carolyn?
No, thank you.
Donna?
I just wanted to emphasize that if if it's possible, we always were talking about outdoor lighting impacts. If we could, if also the glow of this these interior lit structures, if that can be considered, the impact or the screening for that. I think I brought it up before, but I just didn't know if I.
Let's not make them ugly because we're going to remove a bunch of windows.
It's walls of windows, so.
And it's beautiful.
I'm not saying they can't have it, but the neighbor that's right next door shouldn't have to look at it, so they.
No, no one's, no one's got spotlights inside shining them out out to the exterior.
Believe me, when you're looking at walls of windows, it's not great. They can screen it, that would be fine, so they need to show the screening.
Oh, I think they can also just show a photometric plan too, just to demonstrate that lighting is not going to extend beyond the property boundaries. That I mean, because they did not provide any of that information. So that's another option that they can provide just to demonstrate that the anticipated lighting would not extend.
Does have, you know, an impact on nocturnal, if we're talking about an environmental impact statement, that there is an impact to having a big, huge glowing structure, so. They screen it, I'm fine.
Dan? Sorry, I missed you before.
I've got all my comments.
Okay, my only last comment is to emphasize that the three dimensional views are very important, I think, for the board and the community to to understand the proposal very well. So in the past, we had asked for a three D model, you know, where the where the buildings would be shown just as blocks to make it easy with, you know, no details. And I wasn't sure where that stood, so please, please address the possibility for providing such a three D model for that. Those models can be made and I inserted into Google Earth very easily by any member of the public, so they can see what a given project would look like from their house. This is easy to do. I've done it even myself, so I would like to 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 ask again that that be included. I wasn't sure, I didn't see any mention of that.
Right, just to let you know, it is in the in the scope. We specifically ask visual analysis such as site sections, photographic or video simulations, three D computer modeling, et cetera, will will be used to generate images of potential visual impacts of the post project in various vantage points on the surrounding neighborhood and including visual impacts to and from the Hudson River.
Great, but more specifically to that would be that it be a an active solid model so that, you know, you end up with a file that that you can distribute and people can just import it into Google Earth. So then it, the the solid model just gets superimposed on existing satellite data. And so you can see what something actually looks like, and it's easy to do. So I'm hoping that will will be included.
Gareth, is that the shape file? Is that what you're talking about?
No, shape file is a little different. Yeah, that's more for G I S. Yeah. Yeah, the shape files are very important for for G I S. And that is in there. That was my final comment. Anything more from anyone?
Will we have a moment to just discuss, like, setting some kind of procedures for when the public, it's it's a work session. So I don't, we could probably talk about it the next time before we have the public. Well, we have a moment to just discuss, like, setting some kind of procedures for when the public, it's a work session, so I don't, we could probably talk about it the next time before we have the public hearing, but if. At some point, I think we should set like time limitations and maybe some. Some kind of. So we don't, we're not here like for hours and hours during a public hearing where people are saying the same things over and over again. Is there, do you want to talk about now, or can we talk about the next meeting, or?
I wouldn't mind talking about it now.
Kathy, do you want to talk about what their?
I mean, I think it would be appropriate for the board to set limitations, you know, I don't think it's unreasonable to say that the board doesn't want to be here till one in the morning. So, you know, you could have a cutoff and just announce it from the start that we're going to end at such and such a time. So the next meeting wouldn't be a public hearing, but when you set the public hearing, I think we can notice it from, you know, a start date here to an end date here, and if more people want to continue to speak, you can continue the. Public hearing. And I mean, I'm an end time, just, we'll just notice it as that.
Right, I think one of the things we can try to do is emphasize, like, having written DIs's, you know, it's a lot easier to respond to actual written material. You know, than to try to like pull from somebody's, you know, comments in a public hearing. Because in all reality, you know, you, you, you express yourself much better in written form than anybody really does in, you know, just speaking. And so I find that in terms of actually having something to be able to really respond to, it's better in written form, so we can try to highlight that. You know, so that people can, you know, clearly can, they can express their concerns, but then really try to emphasize a written response or, you know, would be more helpful. And then also, I think the other thing we can try to do is when, if somebody has concerns with like traffic. You know, and somebody already spoke about traffic, maybe say, okay, if they want to say they also have concerns about traffic, they can just highlight, I have concerns about traffic too. As opposed to repeating the same exact concerns, because just because, you know, I think a lot of times the public feels that if twenty people say it. You know, that it's, it weighs, you know, more heavily and in all reality. You know, the, this is really for the applicant to have to respond to in the final environmental impact statement, the overall submission, so if twenty people all request the same comment. They only have to answer that comment once in the FEIS, so really, it's just trying to capture all of the issues. And so if it's the same issue over and over again, we can just say, we can just ask the public just to say, yes, we also are concerned with traffic, similar to the prior comment, and then just provide any new comments. Or new topic areas that should be responded to.
Yeah, and that can save a lot of time, for sure. Donna, did you have any thoughts on what is a reasonable ending point?
Well, for me, ten o'clock would be. I don't know what anybody else feels, but beyond that, I'm not going to be like really taking in much stuff.
Okay, Jim, do you have a thought on what's the reasonable ending time?
I think previously in past meetings, we, we set a certain amount of time for each, each person, I don't, I don't want to just have somebody show up to the meeting and then not be able to. You know, say what they wanted to say, so we could possibly just give a time limit for each person, and then it is what it is.
So.
I'm not going to want to stay up this time.
We, yeah, Jim, to that comment, we can always just adjourn to the next meeting too, I mean, we can go as many meetings as would be necessary. That's, I mean, we certainly want to get every comment, that's, that's absolutely critical that we hear every comment. But that could either be done by going to one in the morning or by going for, you know, two meetings instead of one.
Or we can even do, we can set a time limit per person, which we do with the Board of Legislators, but we also ask the people sign up ahead of time to comment, so that we have an idea of. You know, how long it's going, and if we, if we see too many people are signing up and it's going to go really late, we schedule a second hearing. So, you know, we could, we can do something like that.
Can I also ask? You know, this, there is the possibility, there's going to be other people on the agenda.
Right.
Is there a way to, I mean, I just don't know how you can do this equitably, like, is, do you, you know, if there's somebody that's just doing a. Like, it's an ARB review, whereas it's really minors, do they have to wait, you know, till ten o'clock to?
No, I mean, you can set, we can set a separate public hearing just for this particular.
That might be, that might be really good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Written comments, please.
Yeah, written, written comments, being encouraged heavily, yeah.
We could do like an email kind of a sign, signup thing, so that we had an idea of how many people, you know, wanted to speak and if we need the second, you know, set a second hearing.
But we can just keep public hearings going as long as we want and need to.
Right. But we also have to keep in mind, we might be having to.
Because I have to work the next day, so I, you know, for me to have like, you know, like, I just hope the public will not start repeating everything, and, and then also it needs to, and I guess this lays on you Gareth, it has to really be directed that. You know, this is not if they like the project or don't like the project, this is really just about this particular document, so I think that needs to be reined in, because there'll be plenty of time for that. But, um.
Um, well, so just, we, another aside, we can start the meeting earlier, right, we don't have to start it at seven thirty, so that's, that's another option.
That's a good point.
And then also, I think some of this conversation might shift a bit, because in January is when. The, technically, the executive order for virtual meetings might change, so. You know, and I'm not saying that this is gonna, you know, we're not going to have a public hearing till January, but we're already in November. And they still have to submit revisions, and we have to review those and then set for a public hearing, so we are potentially looking at a public hearing after those executive orders are. And, so I don't know if they're going to extend them or if we're going to be back in person, so we'll also have to deal with that situation as well.
That, that's a good point, if we anticipate a large crowd in person. And we want to still maintain, you know, safe practices, we might think about a different venue, perhaps going to the library as we've done in the past.
Right.
But you have to be out by nine o'clock, I believe.
Right.
Ah.
So that might be excellent.
So it, so it's, it all works out. Another option, although it's not as big, is the community center room downstairs, that's, that's bigger than.
Yeah, the ventilation doesn't seem too keen there, I don't know.
It's also noisy with the basketball sometimes too.
Right. So we have, we have a couple of options, but we'll definitely, we'll, we'll think about it and we'll come back to the board with some things to consider.
Okay.
I, I can't function the next day and I have to, I have, you know, my own work to do, this is my volunteer thing, and I have to be able to function next day, so I can't, I can't be putting in like super late nights.
We, yeah, we, we've had elevens and one time almost midnight, you know, just a couple minutes before midnight once, that was, that was a tough one. Okay, so we will, we will not do those, but we'll, we'll have to figure out the details. Any parting thoughts by anyone?
Kathy, Kathy sent me an email that, that Bob Peake has a question, so he would like to be promoted back.
I know, no, I was asking, do you want to ask him to come back if he hasn't been, sorry. Before we close, I don't know if you want to.
Yeah, that's probably a good idea, should we?
Yeah, okay.
From the consultant.
Why do you, yeah, go ahead, you, you might bring Glenn back too, they can interact on their question.
Yeah, I don't have any specific questions, you know, I think we look forward to Valerie's consolidated memo and then, you know, proceeding from there, so.
Okay, great. All right, well, with that, then if there are no objections, I would entertain a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
I have some comments, guys, Glenn?
Oh.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize I was getting a, the invite, I have two, just two comments.
Okay, go ahead.
So, two things, the. Some of the things that are being asked appear to be things that will get into. If we ever get there, extreme detail at the formal site plan stage of the process. Like a detailed landscaping plan. As an example, there are other things, and, and I, other than having a very kind of cursory. Landscape plan today, or a narrative as to kind of the trees and things that we will try to use. But to get into detail about, to get into a detailed landscaping plan when we're still at the conceptual level seems to me to be just. You know, useless work, I mean, we've already been through this planning process with you for a long time, as you know. And then secondly, the, the alternatives. So in two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen, we spent fifteen months. Shooting alternative plans back and forth between FP Clark and ourselves. We paid them upwards of fifty thousand dollars for their alternative analysis, review of our analysis, and I paid my architects at least another fifty thousand dollars. So all of those plans were reviewed by FP Clark. And there's all sorts of dialogue, emails, documents flowing back and forth between us. Verifying those plans. And so my concern now is, so a hundred thousand dollars later in a year, fifteen, year and three months of time spent with FP Clark preparing those alternative plans. And to now being asked to, you know, Valerie, you weren't around then, so you don't know this, but to be asked to revise them again is just. Look, FP Clark, you hired them, they blessed these plans, and while they may not be. Completely accurate due to topo or whatever, most of these plans, we don't want to build. None of those plans.
Let, let me, let me just interject that there's, we never got to a stage where there was an accepted FBIS, that's, that's number one, so it's not like any document was in a final form that was blessed. And. Currently, the document is not complete and doesn't comply with the scope, so that, that needs to be addressed as outlined.
Okay, well, I don't agree with that statement, Kathy, I don't agree with that statement that it was, it was in a position where it was complete. And let's not get into it, let's not get into it, it's not, this is not a place. But what I can tell you though is that the alternatives were blessed by your planning consultant and circulated by the, to the board.
The, the. So the very same ones you're saying, the very same alternatives?
The ones that are, been circulated to everybody, those have been, were done, were viewed by FP Clark, were given to their traffic consultants internally. To confirm the traffic impacts, to confirm the fiscal impacts.
Right, no, we.
And each one of those alternatives has got to be, in the document, got to be ten to twelve pages or more, each one, analysis. Took them more than a year to do, everything else was done, and that stalled the project. It's not, this is not a simple thing to do, and I, you know.
I think the board's trying to get a better sense of what, you know, what a conventional subdivision layout would look like, what a cluster subdivision layout would look like, you know. By identifying alternatives that you're going to develop and put, like, basically at home within the wetlands, it's just not realistic.
But, but we have no interest in building any of those things, I mean.
That's not a viable alternative, we're not telling, don't, don't show a home in a wetland and say that that's a viable alternative, I think that's what Valerie's trying to say, and if you, and in one section you say you've taken into account. The steep slope calculation, and you don't say that to the sections. The other alternatives.
All I know is a hundred and some thousand dollars later in a year, fifteen months, and multiple emails, multiple reviews by FP Clark and its internal people. Whether it's traffic, whether it's fiscal, whether it's site plan, they all did it, and it came back. There were, they, there were some requests, the requests that were even, we had finished it. And FP Clark said, okay, well, we want you to show all of them with two exits. Because we want all of them to be consistent. And we said, there's no reason to show them all with two exits, but there were things as ridiculous as that.
Guys, I think you would be served then, other than making this argument that, I mean, position is the document in that section is not complete, I think you and your consultant should go back, look at the actual. You know, comments, the preliminary comments that you have so far, and try to respond to it and make the document more complete once you get the final comments.
Look. At that stage of the game, with paying a consultant of yours. Fifty thousand dollars and spending a year going back and forth with him, and him submitting and verifying to you as a board, not trying to put you on the spot. But here I am being asked to revise all of these plans, when we went through mind bending exercise with FP Clark.
And the FEIS was never accepted as complete, we never went.
That's not, that's not.
It, it is.
We can debate that. And I, I don't want to get into that. I don't want to get into, and that's not an answer. That's not the answer.
You're trying to say that we're bound by something that we're, that the planning board is absolutely not bound by.
I don't want to get legalistic here, I don't, all I want to do is get this finished, and I want, the planning board needs to be reasonable, having spent as much time as we did, as much money. And to believe that the planning board and its consultant had blessed those alternatives. Because if they didn't, we certainly wouldn't have stuck them in the document. There are emails, there are doc, there's, there's documents flying back and forth between us and, and FP Clark, there's a whole. And we, and I can't tell you how many times we were just upset and making calls to the, the town board, to the planning board, saying this is ridiculous.
My, my only comment to that is that validating or having independent validation of the approvability of those alternatives is really critical. Otherwise, the community will not accept them as valid. As valid comparison points.
But if, we're not making a proposal to the town to develop any of those.
That's irrelevant.
It's not irrelevant.
It is, they need to be approvable in order for them to be relevant as comparative points, because the whole point of having them is so that. The community and the board can, you know, compare different impacts across these kinds of alternatives. So it's, it's really important that those alternatives be approvable, and that was something that the community was very. Spoke very strongly on, and rightfully so, insisting that they be valid, fully valid alternatives. So. On, on your point that these alternatives have already been addressed, that I don't know how to deal with. Whether or not you could bring the FP Clark analysis to bear in your discussions. I, that's a legal question.
I'm just pointing, look, this is.
We, we know, we know it's hard, we know it's hard, and we know it's expensive.
Fourteen, and we spent a year and, I have the bills. 2014 and we spent a year and, I have the bills. And I had had all sorts of discussions with the town board and the prior planning board about this, and here we are being asked again to revise them for whatever reasons. Because we, maybe there's some that touch into a wetland, but.
Well, here are actually your alternatives, the, if you read what the narrative, it specifically says there'll be direct disturbance to the wetlands, so it's not just touching.
Okay, so there can be, but there can be direct disturbance, it's, I mean, it's not something that, I mean, that wetland is, let's not get into that, that wetland is a wet, it's a drainage ditch from the, from Narragansett Road, it's, that's all it is, it's a drainage.
I think at this point, I think at this point, we heard, I think the board heard what you said, we're going to finish reviewing the document, incorporating our comments and submit those, and the board will submit those back. They will be voting on November 17th on the completeness and at that point, you know, they can take into consideration your comments tonight.
Okay, the other comment too is, there really needs to be separation as to what is required at this level. And I, again, I point out the landscape plan. It seems to me to, what level do you want a landscape plan? This is a concept approval of a concept plan.
Glenn, that, that's not accurate, this is a seeker review and we, this is, you know, we need to analyze all the impacts. And one of the impacts is the buffer and, you know, that, and screening. So it has to have enough detail that the board can assess the buffer area and potential screening, that's the level of detail. Because that's the potential impact. Do you have to name every, I don't know, but I, I, you have to provide more than you have done so far, is what I'm hearing, because we can't assess the potential for screening. It's certainly not a concept plan that, you know, we have to have the level of detail required that they can assess the, the impact, otherwise it's not a valid seeker review.
Anyway, all right, those are my thoughts.
Okay, thank you, Glenn.
All right, thank you, Gareth, thank you all.
So with that, do I have a second on? Well, let me, let me call for a new one, a motion to adjourn. Yes, do I have a second?
Second.
And Jim, how do you vote?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, so with that, thank you all very much. And when, when is, when is our next date then, the 17th?
Yes.
Okay, very good, all right, thanks again.
Good night.
Have a good night.
Bye, everybody.
Bye bye.
Gareth?
Yes.
I'm not sure I'll be able to make the 17th because of the county budget hearing.